Five seconds, quiet and set.
I can't really like.
Mike Solotz, you're live.
Good evening, welcome to the September ninth, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter one zero seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, which suspends the requirement of the open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, one four zero eight six five zero three one two three, and access code two three five two three five eight six one. Or the public can join via computer at global dot go to meeting dot com, join two three five two three five eight six one. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. Our first item is a executive session.
Madam Chair.
Just one point of clarification, can the date, today's date is?
September ninth, two thousand and twenty five.
September eighth.
September eighth, two thousand and twenty five.
That's why I wanted to clarify when you started, I just want to, it is the eighth.
It's the eighth, I beg your pardon.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with MGL Chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A seven, to receive and consider an attorney-client communication regarding the appointing authority for boards and commissions under section four point zero one of the Town Charter to come out of executive session and reconvene in open session.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we have a roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Clyde?
Yes.
And Ann, yes. Sword. (end of transcript)
All the meeting of the Select Board, August, excuse me, September 8th, 2025, to order, and we'll stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on our agenda, we have public comments, and Danielle just said no one has signed up for this section of public comments, community organizations, and do I hear a motion to move item 10B through now in the agenda?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. So, Dory, do you want to talk?
Yes, thank you so much. Paul, can you come on up? So, I respectfully request the confirmation of my appointment of Paul Delacqua to the Assistant Town Manager, Chief Economic Development Director for the Town of Auburn. Paul has gone through a lengthy interview process with more than one interview, and was the unanimous decision among the people that were interviewing him. He has over 20 years of experience in economic development and planning, which is a focus for the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen and myself, and he has got the skills and the experience necessary, I feel, to move us forward in working with our strategic plan and our housing production plan, and our current staff in Planning Department as well. So, I respectfully request the confirmation of the Board of Selectmen for this appointment.
Thank you. Any questions, or any motions?
So, I'd like to ask a question. Just for full disclosure, I've worked professionally with Paul in my day job, but I just wanted to ask, so Paul, I've been known to say several times that Auburn does a lot of great planning. We have a great number of planning documents. Where we fall short sometimes is on the follow-up with respect to 40B, with respect to the jury square plan, with respect to economic development. Can you talk a little bit about your history, your experience, and your approach when it comes to taking those plans and implementing them, and actually approaching and bringing the type of businesses that the residents want to see in town?
Absolutely. Can we hear me? Yeah, absolutely. Through the chair, thank you, and again, thank you, Dory, for the kind introduction, the kind words. Again, as a planner, we often, we're often involved in long and lengthy planning processes, and as someone who's a planner, I never want to be part of one of those processes, like you just alluded to, where you go through it, you get the public input, you design the graphics, the maps, and all that, and then it sits proverbially on the shelf. That's, you know, that's not fun for a planner, and reflects badly on the planning profession, if you will, in some ways. Can we be more direct, can we be more assertive in making sure our plans get implemented? And that's certainly a pet project of mine in my most recent time in Boylston. We, over the past several years, we did what I would call the planningly correct things. We did our housing production plan, we updated our open space plan, we had an economic development, we had a master plan, and we're doing a smaller plan now as well, the town is, I'm not involved with that anymore. But the point of that is, is each of those plans, literally the master plan had like 367 action items identified. What do you do with that? So, one thing I was working on was a, was an internal matrix at the moment, it's going to be public eventually, but tracking all those items, all these plans have assignments of who, what department's supposed to be working on that. You know, as a planner, often you get wrapped up in the day-to-day, oh, I got to worry about that planning board meeting, or we got that public hearing coming up. But I feel like in this role, I'll be able to look at some of these action items that are already in some of the plans that Auburn has on the books already, take them, put them, synthesize them, see where there's duplication, see where the work has already been done, and then find my ways I can dive in from there. So, I don't know, hopefully, well, maybe there are 367 items on Auburn's list. If there are, great, I'll be busy for the next five years. But that said, that's what my intent is, when I start in a couple of weeks sitting downstairs, that's going to be one of the first things I look at.
Thank you.
Okay. Dory, do you?
Yes, further, I wanted to just elaborate a little bit more after the questions. I am also, I have also appointed Steve Coleman, who is our Fire Chief for a permanent part-time Town Manager, and the reason for that is because he is currently working on some pretty large projects for me, such as the electronic purchase orders and ESS and our Robert Gaudet Centennial. So, he will be staying on, he'll be working with Paul and myself for a while to make sure none of those types of projects fall through the cracks. It is, I am staying within the Town Meeting approved budget for this line item, and I feel like I'm personally very grateful that I have these two people that have the expertise that can provide support to me, to you, and to the town, and move the town forward. So, I think it's really important to mention that as well. He does not need to be appointed through this process, but it's important that that's made public as well.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, sorry, that we vote to accept the Town Manager's appointment of Paul, I'm going to kill your last name, I'm so sorry, Dela-
Delacqua.
Delacqua as Assistant Town Manager and Economic Development Director.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Thank you very much, nice seeing you.
Thank you to the board. I look forward to working with you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, going back to our agenda now, we're on Section 6, Presentations in Public Hearings, A, Department Snapshot Assessing. Our Chief Assessor Seth Woolard and Assistant Assessor Lisa Targansky will be present. Come on in. Hi, Seth.
Hi, how are you this evening? John's going to help out for a second. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, John. currently, and I think we originally scheduled to do this in June, so a lot of the information might pertain to the end of fiscal '25, and some of it, we're just rolling into '26, so just bear with me. So, without further ado, we will get rolling. So, the fiscal tax billing, we completed the fiscal '26 preliminary billing of real estate. That was billed on July 1st, 2025, in the amount of $24.1 million in personal property and the amount of $914,735. The second quarter will be done shortly, we're going to try to plan on actually doing it tomorrow, and that will be mailed out on October 1st, 2025. Real estate in fiscal '25 was billed out at over north of $47 million. 2024 real estate was at $46 million, so there's a little bit of an increase there. The personal property in '25 was about $1.8 million billed. In fiscal '24, it was $1.744, so you can see there's a slight trend up. Motor vehicle in fiscal '25 was billed just short of $4 million. In comparison to the fiscal '24 motor vehicle, which was $3.75. Supplemental billing in fiscal 2025 was $54,378. That included the Eastland Partner 26 Albert Street project. In fiscal '24, there was $22,085 billed, supplemental bills. We are currently doing roughly 100 field inspections a month, and we are just completing the fiscal '26 growth and valuations. Abatements and exemptions, real estate exemptions in fiscal '25, we had 219 approved, they were submitted to Gateway in April of 2025 and approved by the state. There was $268,691.76 tax dollars abated, and there was $158,477.15 that were reimbursed. The real estate exemptions, there were 229 approved in fiscal '24, and there was $250,000, $251,000 tax dollars abated, and $160,000 state reimbursed. This is just a comparison snapshot. Motor vehicle abatements, fiscal '25, 688, and fiscal '24, there was 638 veterans. We did have the HERO Act come online, and there were 78 approved, submitted to Gateway to DOR in April 2025, they were approved by the state, and that was about $23,000 tax dollars abated, and the state reimburses those 100%. This represents the '24 and '25, and was, is kind of a new law that got enacted, the HEROES Act, in August of 2024. There were four real estate abatements and one personal property abatement. Access GIS, which was another project that we have been working on, so the People GIS mapping software essentially went away or needed other software, Esri, to make it viable, and we decided as a town with IT and some other departments to implement Access GIS, which is the new mapping software. We collaborated with DDIS, DPW, Planning Building, to work towards having one local mapping system with many layers of information from each department. So, big, big shout-out to Mike Marino and John from IT, they worked diligently to help set that up and migrate and integrate that. This slide right here is kind of a, this was presented to us from Cartographics, which is Access GIS, which is our assessor mapping software, but really, it's a platform for the entire town to build like a geographical information system off of, and it starts with the maps online, you can find those maps under the Assessing Department. But as we grow and build this thing, it could become, you know, there's various departments that could put in things like permitting, and the Health Department could use it, Administration, Public Works, Public Safety, adding numerous- public works, public safety, adding numerous layers and information to it. And the role of the assessor, I don't know if anybody had a chance to watch this, but it's got the YouTube link to it, and it's about an hour and 15 minutes. So we're not gonna watch it here tonight, but it's a little easy watching for late night tonight. But it's very, it's about an hour and 15 minutes, and it's a really, it really is a good watch of what the assessor does. And that is it. You're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, please.
I have a couple. The increases in the tax billing, is that attributed to new growth? Is that attributed to the assessed value? How was that increase?
That is pretty much attributed to the valuations just increasing, like the market increases.
Are we aware of how much or how little growth has happened, or?
The fiscal '26 growth has been certified by the state, it's around $730,000.
Then the difference from the abatements and their state reimbursement, is that all formula-driven, or what are the reasons for the gaps?
The state only, if you have hometown rules, a lot of times the state will not reimburse on those. So those have been adopted over the years by the town, and that's just goes into the Auburn budget.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you Seth, I appreciate your coming again.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you Seth. All right, next on our agenda, we're gonna talk about the common victory license for Wagner Motorsports International. Is there anyone here? Please have a seat, sir.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, do you want to tell us about the license that you're seeking?
I was asked to come here to represent Mark Wagner, I believe, for serving beverage in a place of business at 460 Southbridge Street.
What is your name, sir?
Eric Brunel.
Eric Brunel.
Yeah, I'm the contractor. I'm just the contractor for him. He apologizes for not being here, but I'll do my best to represent him.
Okay, and you're looking for, you'd like to offer cafe experience to our customers. This space will feature complimentary coffee, snacks, juices, and an upgraded option for sandwiches, fresh pizza and desserts. At Wagner Motorsports, 460 Southbridge Street. Monday through Friday, 8 to 8, Saturday, 8 to 5, Sunday, 12 to 5. And this was passed by the development court, the DCG group, as long as you obtain necessary permits, including from the border. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have one, Madam Chair. Is, is this service only for customers of Wagner Motorsports, or is this something that he's offering to, he's trying to open a small cafe, similar to like a Rotman's when they had their cafe, which offered entertainment?
My understanding is it's for customers that come in to look around or purchase what they have to offer. Yep.
Do I hear a motion?
I believe you have to ask if, does anyone from the public?
Does anyone from the public have any questions? Hearing, none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the hearing is closed.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the common victory license for Wagner Motorsports International at 460 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. You're all set, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is a departmental item, our town planner is gonna talk to us because we're gonna transmit the proposed traffic study bylaw from the town meeting to the planning board. It's Eric Adams here.
Madam Chair, before we start that, can I actually make a motion that we move up Items 9B and 9C?
Okay.
I'll second.
And, and, I'm sorry, N9D.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so thank you, have a seat, please, Adam, sorry. Looking at gift acceptances in accordance with Mass. General Law 4453A. We have a gift of $50 to the Auburn Public Library from Shaw's for book purchasing.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve with gratitude the gift of $50 to the Auburn Public Library from Shaw's for book purchasing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the next item is C, we're gonna talk about an open air license for the Friends of the Auburn Public Library at their annual book sale. Is anyone here to talk about that? Oh, hi.
I'm Linda Data, I'm president of the Friends of the Library, I've been here before. So we're requesting a permit for an outdoor book sale to be held behind the library on Saturday, September 27th, from 10 to 12:30.
Madam Chair, before we vote, first, I just wanna thank you and the Auburn Friends for everything you do for the public library, it's greatly appreciated. I did wanna ask one question of the administration. My understanding is that this will most likely be held on the driveway behind or on the side of the library?
At the garage, the opening to the garage, yeah.
That's in pretty rough shape, the last time I was there. Is there any way that we can do something to at least make the pavement walkable? I'm just thinking residents, little kids, elderly, as they're walking back there, there's lots of tripping hazards, potholes, et cetera, and that's, I'd like to see it a little bit nicer before we send a whole group of people back there.
Through the chair, definitely, I went back there myself, and because of the work being done by Amarillo, it is a bit hazardous, so we will definitely send someone over there so that it's successful.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One question. If, if we have such rough situations, why isn't this being held in the building, which frankly, it's not a great location for anything to happen back there, irrespective of what's going on. The distance to walk from the parking garage, if you're a person who is mobility-challenged, is not great, whereas getting them into the building, to the Miriam Room, is much easier. So, you know, in future, I think we should be having these in the library, these individuals are supporting the library. You know, it's climate-controlled, we have volunteers for this organization out in the heat in various different conditions. I don't think that's a way that we appreciate the volunteers who are giving back to the community. So, you know, I would appreciate it, I will vote for this, but I would prefer that the administration work with the library board and get this moved inside, rather than try and hastily make something potentially, you know, suitable for people who might be using wheelchairs, might be using walkers, might be using canes. It's not a good look for the town, again, we have volunteers, it's just not a great location for, for these people or this event, and I think the library, which benefits from this, should be hosting this library event indoors in the Miriam Room.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
The reason that it's easier for us, the volunteers, to do it outside is the Friends bought the carts that the books are on, only because we were bringing the books out in carton boxes. In order to do an indoor sale, all of those carts have to be brought out, up the ramp, and into the building, and only the volunteers do this, the library staff does not do that. This is televised, we're old. It's easier for us to get it out into the, I mean, we've done it, but it's difficult.
I'm sure it is, but I think we should be able to find a way to make it so those carts are available, so you don't have to do that, so that they're in a position where you can roll them into the building.
It is a volunteer thing that we do, so we haven't enlisted help from, from anybody else, but inside is great, but that, that's why we do it outside.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm more concerned about your patrons, and I'm also concerned about you as volunteers being back there, and I know when I was trying to buy something with a debit card, we had to walk into the building, so there's connectivity issues, that affects everything, so obviously, going forward, you know, the administration, I'm sure, will do its best to make this.
Wait, wait, we appreciate that.
I will make a motion that we approve the open air license for the Friends of Auburn Public Library at 369 Southbridge Street for their annual book sale, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license, render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that because this is a charitable organization, a nonprofit, that we waive the license fee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the next item is also from Section 9, Letter D. The Board votes on an open air license for the Auburn Chamber of Commerce at 40 Auburn Street, the annual scarecrow contest. Is there anyone from the chamber? Oh, great, come on, have a seat. Good evening.
Yes, so we are looking to hold, oh gosh, I think this is gonna be our fourth annual scarecrow contest now, born in COVID, so it's going to be from, our setup is gonna be October 11th to the 13th, though three days to set up. Judging is going to be online from the 15th to the 31st, and then all scarecrows to be down by the 2nd. Okay, and being that we do understand there's the construction there at the library, so we're taking it a little bit further away from that. We had met with the DPW to walk the premise in years past, which we plan on doing again this year, and then we set up posts, so that people just don't have a free-for-all, they know that there's assigned spots for their scarecrows. It is a registration, so nobody can just go throw up a scarecrow without registering with us first.
Any questions?
Great event, thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the open air license for the Auburn Chamber of Commerce at 40 Auburn Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, for their annual scarecrow contest, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to waive the license fee, considering that this is a nonprofit. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You're all set, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, returning to our agenda, we're now on departmental items, number seven. Town Planner, Dr. Menard, would you come up, please? We're gonna vote on transmitting the proposed traffic study bylaw from the annual town meeting, Article 35, to the planning board for public hearing per Mass. General Law 48.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my understanding is this board would like the traffic bylaw to move forward, and as we know from our last meeting, I think it was the last meeting here, transmitted to other zoning bylaws to the town, to the planning board for public hearing, so that's why I'm here about that today, it needs to be formally transmitted for the public hearing, which I'm scheduling for October 14th. Unfortunately, we don't, there's no meeting in time for them to schedule for, so that's gonna be the date. The zoning bylaw review committee is meeting next week, so they'll be reviewing this also to get some resident input on this, and I was a citizen in the spring, but we'll kind of take a critique and look at it, and if this board has any suggestions towards it, I encourage you to reach out to me also and make those suggestions so I can work in for town meeting.
Thank you. Any questions?
So Madam Chair, I hate to beat this dead horse, but we voted not to support this because there were several fatal flaws, I call them, back at the May town meeting, although in spirit, we all were supportive of this idea. Back in June, we voted to send this to the zoning bylaw committee in order to have them go through all the public hearing, develop a warrant article that would be able to make its way to town meeting, and it sounds like they haven't done that yet, but they will in advance of the planning board meeting. The language presented here, again, from Article 35, and at that time, I had asked that any language given to the zoning bylaw committee be amended to call out and fix various fatal flaws that were in this. And the document that was provided in our, in our handout is the exact same as what was presented in May. So, once again, I'd like to ask that before this go to the zoning bylaw committee, and before it go to the planning board, the various text that I had pointed out three or four times now, and others had as well, get fixed before it sees the light of day, before any committee, if possible. And I'm more than happy to go through, send with the board's permission, send Dr. Menard, you know, the callouts on where, where those things are. But just, you know, there's references to city instead of town, there's references to the Boston, you know, the Boston geographic area, where the Blackstone River area, there's references to the Massachusetts Department of Public Works Highway Design Manual, which doesn't exist anymore, it's now the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Project Development Design Manual, you know, similar, and other similar issues.
Madam Chair, please send those pieces, I can incorporate them.
And just to be clear, this bylaw was not presented by a town employee, it was, well, it was presented by a citizen on his own, otherwise it would have, wouldn't have had those issues in it when it went to town meeting. Any questions besides that?
Just echo Mr. Crane's comments, when we forwarded it, we specifically talked about correcting it because we knew that there were these issues, and, you know, perhaps something just got missed in translation, but I agree with him, you know, in order for this to go forward on a, as a town meeting item, those items need to be addressed so that it's, meets the intent as well as good practice, as Mr. Crane has pointed out.
No, it is calling for us to vote, yep. So I'll make a motion to transmit the proposed traffic study bylaw with amendments from the annual town meeting, Article 35, to the planning board for a public hearing per Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Subsection 5.
Second. Are you all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, I'll say it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, we don't have any communications, we're looking at select board general items, we don't have any proclamations or recognitions tonight, but we're gonna look at an outdoor entertainment license event for Sheldon's Harley-Davidson. Is there anyone here from Sheldon's? Come on up, thank you. Just come up too, if you want. I said more than one can come up.
Oh, there for the next part.
Oh, okay.
That's okay, thank you.
All right, so this is-
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I just ask, does it make sense to take E and F together since they're for the same event? Yeah, can I make a motion that we take E and F together since they're for the same event?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so you wanna tell us about the event, the first one?
Sure. So what I'm doing, my name's Becca, I'm the Marketing Manager and Event Coordinator at Sheldon's. I'm hosting a second Bike Fest, which is basically like 25 different riders, they come in, they do like a riding competition, we get a first place winner, second place, that type of thing. We have a lot of vendors that come in, and it's really good for, you know, the dealership on its own, and we just wanted to make sure that we have all the licenses in order to do so.
So you want to have any questions?
I do.
Yep.
You're a new event coordinator.
Correct.
Previously, the board has had issues with events at Harley-Davidson, Sheldon's, with burnouts happening, unsafe behaviors in the roadway, customers coming, also very loud music, you know, the neighbors are right behind you and on the other side. And we have had complaints, as a board, from people as far as Eddie Street, which, if you know Prospect Hill at all, that's pretty far up the hill that they're hearing your music. So are you going to have a DJ at this event?
We are not.
I didn't see anything about that.
Nope, we are not having any music.
And is there going to be any burnouts, any sort of things to do with that?
There is a potential, but as far as when it comes to safety precautions, everything is in the back part of the parking lot, completely as far from Route 20 as it can be, along with any smoke that would happen, would dissipate before it got anywhere near to Route 20. There's barriers put up for, you know, pedestrians, there's things in place to make sure that nobody's, you know, going to encounter it, other than just watching it.
Any other questions? All right, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the outdoor entertainment license for Sheldon's Harley-Davidson at 914 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Massachusetts, 01501, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
One second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Madam Chair, Mr. Cronin would like to speak.
I put my name down, should we talk about that, the Sheldon's?
I didn't see it on the list. We have two public comment sections. I'm not sure which one. Did you put it on the second or the first one?
I put it on the second.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Cronin has served the community, he is a resident, his family served the community. Would you make an exception, as you have in the past, to allow him to speak before we take a vote?
Okay, yes, thank you. You may go right to the podium, please, sir, and just identify yourself.
Yeah, Timmy Cronin. I don't have a problem with Harley-Davidson. They've been there years, they're a wonderful company. When you hear a Harley get on the road, you know it's a Harley. But years ago, they had a show that they were burning rubber, and they had a vehicle down there, swear it was a jet. The smoke was going across Route 12 and 20 before it was divided. People were parking in Halligan's parking lot. We had the Auburn Police directing traffic. The smoke was going across. We had the policeman, I mean, when you get burnt rubber, you inhale this, it's not good for you, naturally, and the noise with the band and the loud noise from the exhaust, not good for the hearing. Now, there's like 40,000 cars going by. I know it's a divided road, but to have this noise and the smoke, I would, I hope you would disagree, but it's too late now, but, you know, it's, we live there, eighty-something years now, and, I mean, like I said, they're a good company, but to hand out, and they say that the smoke is not going to go across Route 12 and 20, believe me, they had the traffic slowed down when the smoke was so thick. But I know you gave them the okay now, but...
Which street you live on, sir?
What's that?
Which street are you on?
Hill.
Hill, okay.
Further up on Prospect Street and Eddie Street years ago, they heard it too. And the only reason I'm here is I got a letter too, because I'm in the butter. The rest of the neighborhood probably doesn't even know this, they're here tonight. So, I was too late on that, but that's, I know, trust me, that smoke is going to go across Route 12 and 20, it's slow traffic down. And there were so many people there, bikes, that the emergency vehicle, they had a hard time getting into the parking lot. So on your request, make sure that they have a room, ambulance can come in, or a fire truck. I think that was put on, years ago, on one of the requests.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I believe I heard there was 25 vehicles that were going to be participating?
Riders, yes.
Twenty-five riders, so that would be the maximum amount of noise or vehicle, like...
Correct. There's no more that are allowed to sign up at this point.
Okay, so it is limited?
Correct.
Can I, may I just ask, Madam Chair, considering that we have Chief Coleman here, I'm going to rely on you. This event has happened in the past. Are you, through the DCG, coordinating with the organizers to make sure emergency vehicle access is there? Do you know if there will be police detail officers to ensure public safety?
Thank you, through the chair. To Mr. Carpenter's point, several years ago, I remember that issue, and it was a very significant issue. The Sheldon's at the time, there was a new event coordinator, it certainly was not pulled off the way that it should have been. We had many concerns that year, first being that the burnouts and the stunts were probably about 20 feet off the road of Route 20 in the front of the building. This event, this same event that they're running this year, they ran last year in the back of the property. They do have a traffic plan, they have a police detail, they actually have an EMS detail there that day. They did the burnouts last year in the back of the building. It was a significant difference from years past, when they were doing it in the front of the building. So they have taken significant steps to improve their safety plan and what they're doing.
I guess, you know, I would just say, you know, it sounds like there's been improvements made. Certainly, if, you know, you or your neighbors experience difficulty or hardship from it, please let us know, because obviously, this is an annual event, and staff can make changes, or perhaps next year, they don't get their license if anything happens. But it sounds like between the coordinator and the changes made last year, and working with our staff, that they've addressed a lot of the issues. So hopefully, knock on wood, you won't experience the same.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so now we are looking at the one-day liquor license for Tapavino for the event at Sheldon's Harley-Davidson.
So I'll make a motion to approve...
I just have one, there's no date. I know it says it's coordinated at the same time. I just want to make sure that if one event happens, or if the event doesn't happen, that this does not happen either. That's, so, right, you're planning for the event to be held September 13th?
Correct, this Saturday.
And there's no rain date?
No, there is not.
And then the liquor license, one day, I just want to make sure it's tied to that same date?
It is.
Okay.
We should have separate motions on those licenses.
Correct.
Do we have any more questions first?
No, I'm just saying, Jim, I have no idea. I don't.
So I've already made a motion for the license for Sheldon's. I believe there's a second.
Yeah, I seconded.
Did you read this all?
Yes, I read the, for everything for Sheldon's.
Okay, you put them together?
No, we had the, Mr. Carpenter, as we do with separately, so I've already read the Sheldon's.
Yes, and we voted on it.
Did we actually vote on it?
No.
I don't think we voted.
Okay, all right.
Voting for the, to hear from the gentleman.
So we have a motion, and that has been seconded on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay. And now we're looking at the one-day license for the Tapavino.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Tapavino at 914 Southbridge Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain as well.
Okay, so you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good event.
Have a good event.
Good chair.
All right, so next, we are looking at a board vote on the one-day liquor license for Elm's Cafe and Catering, doing business as Simply Delicious, for an event at Webster Five Bank at 35 Milbury Street. Are you gentlemen, please come up and just tell us who you are.
Thank you, I'm Brandon Sawyer, event manager with Elm's Cafe and Simply Delicious.
John Morrow.
Can you tell us about the event?
Yeah, so it's going to be a open house, it's Oktoberfest-themed for Webster Five Bank. Going to just be hour and a half, past apps, beer and wine, I'm going to guess more so beer, based on the Oktoberfest. And yeah, open house for Webster Five Bank employees and their customers.
Is this at the new branch, the newly renovated branch?
I believe so. The, yeah, I know that we're moving, I'm not familiar with the town, so, yeah.
And what is the date?
That is going to...
It's at their headquarters.
Oh, it's at the Milbury headquarters, okay. All right.
Uh, 9/18.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Elm's Cafe and Catering, doing business as Simply Delicious, at 35 Milbury Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon the license.
Second.
Will you add the date?
For the date of September 18th, 2025.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Okay, you're all set.
Thank you. Have a great evening, appreciate it.
Through the chair, I just want to, we just did a whole lot of community event approvals, and this is exciting to see. I know we're getting into that time, but Auburn is happening, and like, I'm glad to see all the activity, so.
Yes, it is. It's very good to see, thank you. Number 10, town manager items. For you.
Thank you, through the chair. I would just like to let everyone know that the Fall Special Town Meeting warrant closes this Friday, September 12th, at 1:00 p.m. So those warrant articles will need to come to the town manager's office prior to that time.
Okay, thank you. Have you emailed the town departments?
Yes.
And boards and committees?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so continuing, tabled items, none. Member items, we have a 40B permitting guide, Dan Carpenter, you were on the committee, correct, Dan, that put this together?
Yes.
Can you tell us about it?
Sure. So this was a working group, and actually, two members are sitting all the way in the back. And Dr. Menard and Darlene Coyle were very helpful, and the CMRPC rep, Emily, I'm going to, I can't remember her last name, actually is responsible for the fantastic formatting that this document is in, so we appreciate. She was a late addition, but she was a consequential. So the group has been meeting, I can't remember when it started, but early on, it became clear, I know our charge was to design a guideline, procedure, whatever we wanted to call it, for lip process, but it became very clear early on that we needed both pathways to be reflected in the guideline. So that is what this does. It tries to create a process for the staff. The board and the residents know what to expect. It has taken many of the best practices, such as notifications, the expanded notifications, as well as, drawing up on some of the other stuff. But from day one, staff will, when we're notified, they'll get right to work. And we'll have, if it goes the lip process, we will have good information, and the residents will be invited to give their input. So that's something new. We also, it was actually recommended by one of the board members, one of the working group members, to include town meeting members for the precinct in which the development is going, to invite them to the public hearings, and hopefully leverage their knowledge of the community, as well as a resource and a friendly influence to many of the people who would be dealing with this. So those are the main kind of differences. Everything else is obviously drawn from state law or state documentation.
This is a guideline, of course, not a policy.
Correct.
Do either of you wish to say anything about the guide? Just identify yourself and your title. Thank you.
Dr. Adam Menard.
Darlene Coyle, from Department of Development and Inspection Services. Thank you so much. As Mr. Carpenter has said, the workshop has been really helpful. We've actually had a very full year of 40B questions and experiences, and throughout the public hearings that we've had, we've learned a lot. So we've tried to take everything that we've been exposed to in the past year, and really kind of put it into the guide. And I think one of the, one of the members, and we've all experienced, it is a guide that is going to be like dynamic. So we're going to change it as we, as more things come up. We've already made changes, I think, even from when we met last. So we think it's going to be helpful, and certainly, Mr. Menard has, you know, coordinated a lot of the pieces of that, and we're glad that you're able to review it, gladly take input.
Thank you.
I'll just add in that Bob Tieto, Chair of the EBA, was involved with this, as well as Mr. Carpenter from this board, and Glenn Feldman, who is on the planning boards, we had some board members that helped put this together.
So, yeah, so Glenn Feldman was on the board, and so on the committee, and so was Bob Tieto.
Correct.
Great, thank you. Okay, any questions?
I just have a comment. This was really great, to be honest. I was worried initially during this committee, that it was going to, like, lock Auburn into, like, we're only doing it this way. But when I read through this, I was like, oh, I love how this is set up, and I really appreciate the, like, steps and everything else that's in it. So I just wanted to say that to you guys. Thank you.
We'd also like, CMRPC, Emily Globbets, was, provided some technical assistance, and kind of took everybody's input and put it into kind of like a nice format. So she, she's really been very helpful to us as well, as the fellow members of the committee.
It's very, it's very clear in the document. Good. Great, any other questions, women? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Have a good night. Okay, so now we're going to look at minutes. We have five, minutes from five different meetings here. Do we want to take them together or separately?
Fine, taking them together, if all the other board members are.
I'm fine with that as well.
I would just point out, we don't need to motion.
Right.
All we need to do is if we have any corrections, mention it to the chair, and then ask that they be added. So if anybody has any of those.
All right, does anyone have any, any concerns or questions about the minutes for June 23rd, 2025? How about for July 7th, 2025? July 21st, 2025? August 18th, 2025? Or August 25th, 2025? Any questions? No, so they are accepted as read. All right. And thank you, Danielle. This, that's a lot of minutes to get done. Does this catch, does this catch us up? Oh, nice. Okay, so we're all caught up. We'll get those posted on the website. Perfect. Does anyone have any other questions?
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No.